With a acknowledgement. As we begin our meeting, I'd like to respectfully acknowledge that our meeting today is taking place on occupied coastalish land. We pay respect to our coastalish elders, past and present, and extend that respect to their descendants and all indigenous peoples of this land. To acknowledge this land is to recognize the history of physical and cultural genocide and settler colonialism, which continues to displace indigenous people today. It is also to recognize that these lands, waters, and their significance for the resilience and wise peoples who continue to thrive in this region despite the consequences of displacement and broken treaties. Those who hold settler privilege in this city must work towards supporting the coastalish people and all indigenous people using the various forms of wealth and privilege that we reap due to it. As a commission, we commit to being better listeners, learners, and lifting indigenous voices, and to committing to identifying racist practices and to practice allyship and striving to a center restorative land stewardship rather than unsustainable and extractive use of the land. With that, I will go to just a quick announcement to any members of the public or visitors. Welcome. We are happy to make all commission meetings open to the public. Please note that the planning commission does not hold public hearings since the commission is an advisory body. We provide recommendations to elected leaders that in turn make the actual decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments appropriately directly to elected officials. This meeting is a hybrid meeting with some individuals participating remotely, while others are participating in person in the boards and I think you're not in the boards and commission room. You're in a different room.
We are.
370.
Thank you. Room 370 in City Hall. With that, I will move to the Color Brave Space norms. I would love for a volunteer to pick one of these for us to hold with us as we go through our discussions today.
I'm happy to go.
Thank you, Matt.
I wanted to highlight the look for learning and commit to learning in public. This afternoon, we are talking about our future sort of work plan for the for the planning commission. And and so I think that's a it's a perfect, perfect way to sort of frame our conversation about what is important for the planning commission moving forward, learning in public.
Thank you, Matt. All right. On our agenda today, we have two agenda items, continued discussion on the proposed legislation to comply with HB 1110, House Bill 1110, which is the missing middle housing bill, and a work session on the future independent work of the commission, which I know we haven't done for a while because we've been so focused on the comprehensive plan update. So I'm excited to hear what you all have come up with in your small groups. And Vanessa, should I will leave a minute toward the end?
We actually do have quorum, so we can go ahead and approve the minutes.
All right, so we are approving the minutes from April 24th. So can I ask for a motion to approve the minutes?
Zio motions.
Zio, thank you. Is there a second?
Michaela seconds.
Michaela, thank you. Any changes or amendments to the April 24th minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 It felt like fewer voices than usual. So are there any abstentions? Any opposed? All right. Everyone must have said aye then. Thank you. All right, our minutes are passed. Just a couple reminders, our next upcoming commission meetings. Next Thursday's Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting is canceled. And then our next full commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 22nd from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m., which will also be a hybrid meeting with some participating remotely and others participating in the boards and commissions room at Seattle City Hall. I will pass to Vanessa for some announcements and commission business.
Thank you, Jamie. As Jamie noted, this is a hybrid meeting. We have Zio, a commissioner, joining staff here in room 370 of City Hall, and other commissioners are joining us on the MS Teams platform remotely. I would like to encourage commissioners to use the chat function to be recognized to speak and not to use the chat function to enter any substantive comment. As any members of the public who may call in to the meeting will not be able to see the chat function. We do have some members of the public who are joining on the MS Teams platform and they can see the chat, but not but any members of the public calling in won't be able to do so. So also just want to remind commissioners that next week I will be out. Olivia will be out and John will be out Tuesday through Friday. So the only staff that will be around is Robin. So I ask for your patience in the fact that might take Robin a while to get back to you if there are lots of questions. However, the week of May 19th, we're all back and ready and raring to go. We're going to do introductions and then I'll say a few things about public comment. So I'll turn it back to you, Jamie, to start with introductions.
All right, we'll do our usual introductions, feel your name, pronouns, neighborhood you live in, and if you want to say anything about your job, you can. So I'm Jamie, Jamie Shrubel. I use she/her pronouns. And I live in the future 130th station area. I'm excited for when I don't have to say future anymore. And and I work in climate change and environmental justice. And I will pass to my co-chair, Michaela.
Good afternoon. Michaela Dufferin, she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill and I work in affordable housing policy and planning. And I will pass it to Matt.
My name is Matt Hutchins. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a resident of West Seattle and an architect who specializes in infill housing. Let's see, Zio.
Hi, Zio Alvarez, she/her pronouns. I live in White Center, Highland Park, and I work downtown of an architecture firm, past to Cecilia.
Hi, Cecilia, she/her pronouns. I live in the Roosevelt neighborhood in North Seattle and I'm a community organizer and work with people with disabilities on housing and transportation. And I will pass it to Caleb.
Hi, my name is Caleb Toolbray, he/him pronouns. I live in Beacon Hill and I work in education. I'll pass it to Dylan.
Which Dylan?
Dylan S., sorry.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Dylan Sturzen, he/him pronouns. I live in the Belt Town neighborhood and I teach indigenous planning amongst other things at the University of Washington. And I will pass it along to Diana.
Hello, I'm Diana Quintanilla. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill. For my day job, I'm a multimodal transportation planner and I'll pass it to Dylan G.
Hey, everybody. Dylan Glossacki. I am an architect and urban designer with Perkins Eastman, working on residential projects in Seattle. I use he/him pronouns and I live in the Central District. And I'm not sure who hasn't gone yet. Maybe staff can help me out.
Let's go to Andy. Let's go to Andy.
Andy Denenberg, he/him, live in Northeast Seattle and I teach at University of Washington in both public health and urban planning. And I don't know who else hasn't gone yet.
How we can move to staff. John?
Hi, everybody. I'm John Hoy. I'm staff to the planning commission. I use he/him pronouns.
And I'll wrap this up. Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining. My name is Vanessa Murdock. I'm staff to the commission, I use she/her pronouns. And I'm happy to be spending this afternoon with you all. So with that, I am going to hum a few bars about our public comment. We have a couple of different ways. We welcome public comment. And we have a couple of different ways to provide public comment. In person, submitted and writing to me via email or offered on the hybrid meeting platform, MS Teams. If offering comment during the meeting via Teams, please raise your hand in the MS Teams meeting to be recognized to speak during the public comment portion. We don't have anybody, I don't see anybody on the call who's dialed in, so I won't have to read. I won't read what you do if you're calling in. So I'll just give those members of the public joining us about 30 seconds to raise their hand. And Jamie, I will let you know if I see any hands come up. And I am not seeing any, but want to give people time. All right, I am not seeing any hands go up. So Jamie, we do not have any public comment and I will turn it back to you to introduce the first agenda item.
Great. So our first agenda item is our continued discussion. We started this at our last meeting around the interim legislation to implement House Bill 1110. So Planning Commission staff are going to provide an update on the legislation under consideration by the Seattle City Council to implement HP 1110. And our ensuing discussion will inform the public comment that the commission will offer at the May 19th public hearing on the legislation. And this is because we don't have enough time to do a full-blown letter. So we, this is the approach that we are taking so that we can still weigh in on this issue. We have an hour for this agenda item if needed. So I will pass over to staff.
I will take it away. So I was not at the previous meeting where you had where you started this discussion on the interim legislation, but I'm familiar with what was talked about. And I'm here to kind of provide an update and to lead the continuation of that discussion. I just have a few slides, just a couple of reminder slides. So I'll start with this one, just as an overview of the legislation, just so for those of you who may have missed a meeting or need a refresher. So the city council is currently in the process of discussing the interim legislation that would implement the requirements of House Bill. I heard it called 1110 recently, but we'll just call it House Bill 1110. And that is the legislation to create middle housing. And there is a state deadline of June 30th for that legislation. And so the city council is in the process of working through the legislation to meet that state deadline. The interim legislation that is being considered when adopted would go into effect for up to one year. The, just as a note, the interim legislation only changes the standards that are required by state law or that are addressed in the HB 1110 model ordinance. After the after the interim legislation is asked, the city council will move on to considering more permanent legislation to codify HB 1110. There are many other changes that have the city is considering and those are included in the draft permanent legislation, but they are not included in this interim legislation that is currently being considered. And those include such items as stacked flat bonus, corner store allowances and parking requirements and several other items that this commission has heard of. Just as a reminder of the timeline for this interim legislation, the just some of the more recent dates. On Wednesday, April 30th, the council select committee on the comprehensive plan held a briefing on the interim legislation. Yesterday, that same committee discussed some proposed amendments that I will be reviewing in a minute. Today, here we are at the full commission meeting. Vanessa will be talking more a little bit later about the public hearing that we will be providing public comment at that. This is a unique public hearing. They are breaking into two separate sections. There will be a online-only comment period at 9:30 in the morning on Monday, May 19th, and then an in-person session at 4 o'clock PM for those who want to come to City Hall. The select committee is then scheduled to meet on Wednesday, May 21st. And the plan for the committee at that point is to vote on this interim legislation. And if approved, it would go to full city council for their vote on Tuesday, May 27. So I mentioned the select committee on the comprehensive plan met just yesterday. And that session, they introduced several proposed amendments. There are seven. I will go through them. I do want to just say, in general, these are, I would characterize them as fairly minor. They are kind of more technical in nature. They're kind of cleanup. Several council members did say publicly that they did not propose any amendments at this time and will be reserving their amendments for when the permanent legislation is considered. So stay tuned for for that process. We can probably expect some more substantive amendments at that time from several council members. I'll just go through these relatively quickly. Amendment number one, it was proposed because city council just last week adopted Council Bill 120949, which has to do with accessory dwelling units and new state legislation on accessory dwelling units. So this, that council bill was to bring the city into compliance with that state ADU legislation. So this amendment would would ensure consistency with between these two pieces of legislation, the interim legislation and the ADU legislation that was adopted last week. Amendment number two basically amends a previous version of the select committee's work plan. And I will present that to you in a few slides. It it amends and brings up to date their work program outlining key changes, some key changes that are anticipated in the permanent legislation with with a new timeline. Amendment number three is is a little bit more technical in nature. It maintains the current lot coverage maximums for detached single-family structures. This is basically to prevent proposed single-family developments that are vested while the interim legislation is in effect from taking advantage of the current lot or taking advantage of the lot coverage development standards that are intended specifically for middle housing. Amendment number four, it would retain current standards for front yards along Queen Anne Boulevard. Amendment number five is would restore a the minimum 2,500 square foot of floor area for projects on lots that are less than 5,000 square feet in neighborhood residential zones. This was proposed because as drafted, the interim legislation would reduce the permitted size of development on small lots. And so that would correct that to bring that those into consistency. Number amendment number six would is a is a cleanup, just a cleanup of the proposed legislation to clarify and reorganize the neighborhood residential and low-rise density limits. And then amendment number seven would request that the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections report to the city council on changes that the Washington State Building Code Council has made to the types of projects that are reviewed under the residential code. That Building Code Council has been tasked by the Washington State Legislature with with adopting provisions to expand the applicability of the residential code to middle housing types. So it's basically accommodating middle housing and where to categorize it under the residential code. So city council is asking for a report on that as it is developed. Those are the proposed amendments at this time. I will just go through the next steps and the timeline for the interim legislation. So the next steps after the interim legislation are expected that the mayor will transmit the permanent legislation to meet the HB 1110 requirements to the city council. And that has been publicly announced to be anticipated in this month, in May. After that, the council will deliberate and will hold public hearing on the proposed comprehensive plan and on the permanent legislation. And that process is anticipated to run from June through September of this year. And the comprehensive plan and the permanent legislation are anticipated to be effective in October of this year. I just continue with just a few slides. It's my understanding that at the last meeting, the the mayor had just introduced this new legislation that is not part of the comprehensive plan. But the commissioners were interested in learning a little bit more. And it is from Seattle Public Utilities and it is on infrastructure cost sharing. So and it is related to to housing, but it's not officially part of the comprehensive plan. So I'll just give you a brief overview of this. So two weeks ago, the mayor proposed legislation that is designed to unlock housing and essential development in neighborhoods that lack utility infrastructure needed for growth. Seattle Public Utilities has acknowledged that 25% of Seattle City blocks outside of the downtown core lack a water sewer and/or stormwater main line. Under this current city code, the first developer that wants to develop in an area that lacks this type of infrastructure is required to cover the full costs to add that infrastructure, which can often add more than $500,000 to the project regardless of the project size because of the cost to add those main lines. So projects facing those costs have been decided have data has shown that 30% of those those projects are 30% less likely to move forward than those that don't. So the legislation that is proposed would create an equitable cost-sharing approach that spreads the cost of these essential utility improvements proportionally among all developers who benefit from the growth. This policy would reduce the financial burden on any single developer. Single development would only pay for the portion of a new mainline extension directly in front of the property. And Seattle Public Utilities would pay for the remaining portion through an increase in system development charges paid by most new developments. Then after that mainline extension is is built, any future developments on adjacent properties would pay Seattle Public Utilities a fee for their portion of that extension. So the benefits of this cost-sharing legislation are that building out water, wastewater and drainage infrastructure will unlock parcels of land for development that today are not financially feasible. Project costs are more predictable upfront to developers. And the infrastructure will benefit future homeowners by reducing long water sewer and stormwater service lines that are expensive to maintain. So I know there were, there was interest in this. I just want to reiterate it's this is not part of the comprehensive plan, but this legislation is being considered currently by city council. That's all I have.
Great.
Vanessa.
I'll just, thanks, John. So again, today's discussion is really to put any finer points on the public comment that commissioners, Michaela and Matt, thank you for making yourselves available to do that, will be offering on behalf of the planning commission at the May 19th public hearing. When we last discussed this interim legislation, we did not have the proposed amendments before us. So the gist of the public comment that we drafted and sent out to you all in advance of this meeting was really just encouraging any any substantive amendments to be held off on until the permanent legislation is considered. We did not know if suggestions, if amendments might address requiring mandatory housing affordability in our neighborhood residential zones. That amendment did not come forward, so we don't need to address that. So what I will do after today's discussion is fine-tune the public comment and send it out to Michaela and Matt in advance of the May 19th meeting, sorry, public hearing. And again, I'll reiterate that as it stands right now, the public comment offered by the commission really emphasizes the need to get the interim legis or to pass the legislation interim legislation quickly and without amendments and to move on to consideration of the permanent legislation to implement House Bill 1110, which I understand that permanent legislation will be transmitted by the mayor to city council by the end of this month. So with that, I will turn it back to Jamie. I see there's a little bit of activity in the chat. So happy to answer questions that we, to the best of our ability, and look forward to assistance from commissioners who have greater familiarity with these amendments than John or myself. Back to you, Jamie.
Thank you, Vanessa. I see Michaela is first in the queue and then we have Andy after that. And then Matt.
Do you want me to ask my question about the amendments or my question about the cost-sharing proposal or both?
I would just go ahead and do both.
Okay. On the cost-sharing proposal, I know that sidewalks aren't built at all by Seattle Public Utilities. But but I am curious, how how do we fund sidewalk improvements? And why aren't they included in this proposal?
Michaela, my understanding, this is Vanessa, my understanding is that the executive order that put this legislation sort of in in place or for consideration of the council specifically addresses SPU, the Seattle Public Utilities. I, off the top of my head, do not know how sidewalks are funded and so wouldn't want to wager a guess. That's something that we can definitely look into and be able to report back at the next full commission meeting. But it's something that I simply cannot speak to at this moment, at this time.
Yeah, maybe no need to look into it if it does not end up in our future work plan, kind of our area of future focus. It just just an area of curiosity. And then on the amendments, I observed that one seemed very place-specific about setback on Queen Anne Avenue. And can you go back to that language? When it said it restored it to existing standards, I'm not sure I understand what that actually means. Retained current standards for front yards along Queen Anne Boulevard. So it's proposing to allow the current setbacks? Sorry, can you explain a little bit?
I think that's right. I think the I think it's, it was this this amendment. the this this amendment was proposed by that district's council member saying that Queen Anne Boulevard is a significant almost park-like environment and and with and did not go into the actual details of the current standards versus what is proposed. But this amendment kind of just is simple and speaks for itself is to keep the current standards, which I I think it is safe to assume it is just setbacks.
Yeah, I and I can jump in. And again, can can follow up to make sure that my understanding is actually correct. My understanding is that front yards along Queen Anne Boulevard actually have a larger setback than other neighborhood residentially zoned areas as Queen Anne Boulevard is part is actually maintained by the Parks Department as opposed to SDOT, the Transportation Department, and is it is considered in a way a park. And so if the interim legislation were to apply equally across all neighborhood residential zones, the required setback along Queen Anne Boulevard would actually be less than what is currently required along Queen Anne Boulevard.
Michaela, I just pulled up the language. So yes, this amendment would retain the front yard requirement in the current code for neighborhood residential zones for any lots abutting the landmarked portions of Queen Anne Boulevard rather than updating the front yard requirement to ten feet as proposed. It also makes a technical amendment to revise an incorrect reference. So it's like it's basically maintaining the current standards for the front yards because of that portions of Queen Anne Boulevard are landmarked rather than reduce the front yard requirements to 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 only ten feet.
Okay. I would venture to guess that it's it's there are other parts of the city that may have special circumstances as well. And so my my only observation is that it potentially creates sort of a slippery slope where it's not clear what standards they're using to make this specific suggestion and not applying it elsewhere as well. But I understand the rationale now. So thank you. Thank you for the input. I had similar thoughts, Michaela, of like very, very neighborhood and place specific comparison to a lot of the other amendments. And what does that mean for other places that might have very specific locational considerations? So yeah, I had similar thoughts. Andy and then to Matt for some additional context.
Yeah, I I just wanted to say on the proposal to share the costs of water sewer infrastructure to strongly support it. It actually is responsive to a public comment we had probably six months ago of a developer who said they wanted him to pay for so much that his smaller project couldn't go forward because they were asking him to pay too much. The cost sharing makes a lot of sense and I hope we can support it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Matt.
I was only offering information if if need be. I guess the the one thing that seemed incredibly esoteric was the building code question, that amendment. And so as as John said, that the the state has been tasked with with allowing more middle housing. Currently, the residential code only allows for two units to be under this less stringent code and everything else is under the more stringent building code. And this would pivot some of that middle housing that's greater than two units to go under the less expensive, less stringent code. And that's a discussion that's happening at the state level. And so I think this amendment, all it's doing is is just trying to see where we're at and what impact that will be. But it really doesn't affect the code or do anything other than than it's it's just to check in.
Thank you, Matt. That's that's useful for additional context.
Yeah, that's really helpful. Thank you, Matt. Any anyone else want to? Zio, I don't know if you want to say what you put in the chat out loud, just because not even.
Yeah, yeah, just to the earlier question about sidewalk development, I just dropped the the SDOT sidewalk development programs website in the chat and I stated that I think there's also some development requirements around repairing and retaining sidewalks, but I wasn't finding them as as quickly or easily.
Yeah, I think a while back we did. I feel like we did get a briefing a long time ago from SDOT around the prioritization of sidewalks across the city and how expensive it is. And the different they were exploring like cheaper forms of sidewalks too. So I remember that being a challenge for SDOT is is. Yeah, so there were ones where it was like it's like literally like those parking cement blocks, but like flat asphalt instead of like raised cement curb. So there's lots of different things they were exploring because of limited funding. Any dear folks with comments, questions on this particular topic?
Jamie, I'll I'll this is Vanessa. I'll just jump in. I just did a little Googling because I wasn't sure. But the so water and sewage and and stormwater infrastructure is paid mostly through developers fees, whereas sidewalk sidewalks, new sidewalks and repairing of sidewalks is paid for, my understanding, and if Google is correct, which you got to take with a grain of salt, is mostly through the transportation levy. So two very different kind of streams of funding just. And again, this interim legislation doesn't speak to either of those. It was really just an executive order that was released the day before we last met. And commissioners were interested to find out more, so we just wanted a staff to follow up with you all and let you know what what we know, which is a little bit more than what we knew two weeks ago.
Great. Dylan G is next in the chat.
I'm just I just wanted to have to talk a little bit more about this Queen Anne Boulevard exemption. And I mean, like others had said, it's a bit of a slippery slope. Once you start allowing exceptions here and exceptions there. And this establishes a precedent for when the permanent legislation goes into play for other council members to say, well, we've since we've already done this on the interim legislation, let's exempt XYZ in my district. And then get a fellow council members, the other six also say, yeah, I don't want to accept XYZ in mine. You know, looking at Seattle Boulevard, it's the connection between Cary Park and that other little pocket park, somebody else may might know the name of just down the street from it. It's like six or eight blocks from what I'm seeing. And maybe somebody can correct me on that, but that's what I'm understanding is that it's going about eight blocks or so, or is it the entire perimeter up at the top of Queen Anne? I know there's a large boulevard that wraps the entirety of that. And up there. And I'm just, I'm trying to get my head around. It is lovely to walk it, bike it, experience it. At the same time, should we be allowing exceptions and kind of protecting this sort of current experience that street at the expense of allowing more density in that in that area. I know it's a small area and maybe it is worthwhile. I'm just I'm kind of talking out loud. I'm trying to come to a level of comfort with with our stance on this and I'm I feel like we should make some sort of comment and it just it seems like a really specific amendment at a time when we should be keeping things broad and trying to minimize the amount of amendments and save them for the permanent legislation. Just curious what others think about that. The locations. Oh, is it? So is it the entirety of Upper Queen Anne? Is that is it that boulevard that you see with kind of the brown street signs basically that takes you all the way around?
That's what it seems to imply.
Okay, okay. So it's like that entire like kind of mile and a half or two mile sort of wraparound Upper Queen Anne.
And this is this is John. I'll just say that the council member when introducing this amendment did describe Queen Anne Boulevard as the quote crown on top of Queen Anne Hill and did seem to indicate that it was the perimeter as if facing all different directions with parks connecting to various parks on all sides of the hill.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I've I've yeah, been through it then. I know I know it is. It is. It's really nice. It's beautiful. There's a lot of huge trees up there. So yeah, just curious if other folks have thoughts on it's almost kind of exempting basically like a linear park, I guess. And I can see, you know, I could see both sides of it and trying to figure out which side I stand on.
Yeah, I think Matt is in the chat is next. And then Zio dropped a link to the Queen Anne Boulevard Wikipedia page, which has a map on there if folks want to take a look at that. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I don't I don't support this except, you know, because it creates a very you unique and unique sort of like spot spot setbacks for, you know, one street that happens to, you know, isn't isn't obvious. You know, it also includes a lot of buildings that have have non-conforming setbacks like on like across the street from Cary Park. There are massive buildings with zero front yard setback. It seems to be a concession without a real purpose, except I'm sure for those those few property owners. But I think it creates an administrative complication and it also creates a a template for for excluding other sort of streetcar boulevards that, you know, all around the city. And I think that's contrary to the to the intent.
I have a question. Sorry, I'm not in the queue. The oh, I'm just and somebody who maybe knows more about the different historic designations and their like legal requirements might be able to answer this. But if if this is like a historic landmark route, are there other like restrictions on development that would roughly account for this setback? Like, is this the right tool, I guess, for what's attempting to be preserved? Or is this like overwhelming what's possible in this location by applying another, you know, piece of accountability? Is that is that a clear question? Sorry, I'm not I don't think explaining it well.
No, that makes a lot of sense. Do staff have any?
I'm madly clicking away here and I, off the top of my head, I'm not aware of another street in Seattle that is a historic landmark and Queen Anne Boulevard is a historic landmark, landmarked through the landmark process. As I mentioned before, I know that it is managed by the Parks Department as opposed to the Transportation Department, which just makes it already a little bit different. I'm not aware of another street in Seattle that is managed by the Parks Department as opposed to the Transportation Department. We can do I can do some more digging and send you all information tomorrow. Because I'm worried if I just kind of talk off the top of my head, I could be incorrect. I am also thinking that there aren't sidewalks along Queen Anne Boulevard, but I at least in portions of it. So which is either neither here nor there. So long way to say, no, sorry, we staff cannot really, we don't have any more information than what's been presented so far.
I'm curious for folks who might understand this better. So there's a portion of the public right of way that is maintained by the Parks Department. And then this, the proposal is for the setbacks beyond the portion that is in the public right of way, right? And so this is like additional kind of they're considering it like additional green space essentially, but it's not because it's also private property. I'm just trying to understand the connection between the actual boulevard.
Jamie, the best I can do is read the amendment again.
Okay.
So the amendment, this amendment would retain the front yard requirement in the current code for neighborhood residential zones for any lots abutting the landmarked portions of Queen Anne Boulevard rather than updating the front yard requirement to ten feet as proposed.
And do you know what the current setback is?
Don't know. We would have to research that.
Matt, you were next in the queue, I believe.
Not me.
Oh, I saw I saw your name before the Wikipedia thing. I don't know if we got to that or not. I want to make sure we actually got to it.
Yeah, yeah, you did. Yeah.
Okay, good.
Jamie, I'm going to suggest that John and I do a little bit more digging on what kind of precedent this might or might not set. Really more more do some more digging on other areas in the city that might have a similar circumstance. And then I will send that out tomorrow because without having somebody from the landmarks program here or somebody who knows more, I don't think we're going to. Well, we could just do a lot of supposition, but not necessarily have any facts on hand.
What I'm hearing, though, from commissioners are some, depending on your research and finding, is some concern about precedent and some concern about whether or not this is the right tool to address some of the concerns that maybe that amendment was trying to address around like preservation of green space and this historic boulevard. Is that a good summary of where commissioners are out on this? I'm seeing some nods.
Yeah, and part of part of the slippery slope precedent is having having the same zoning with different setbacks in different places.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have an incredibly complicated, you know, miserable code. And, you know, Matt's point about making it even more complicated with this type of one-off is really in general, not the way we want to go.
All right, we'll leave it to staff to do a little more digging on this particular one for us. Thank you all for raising that discussion. If there's not any other discussion on this particular topic, I might move us to the next topic in our agenda. So I will pause for any final comments.
Are we talking about all of the H the interim legislation or?
Yes. Anything on the interim legislation, if you have other comments, now is the time.
Then I I do.
All right, let's go back.
Let's see. With the the interim legislation, I think that with our comments, I would like to like enforce that there's that we should do some of these things now. If we're talking about doing things in three, there's a that there's a final legislation in three months, including the the affordable housing bonus, including the stack flat bonus or including a F A F A R bump for stacked flats. These are just kind of they're coming, they're coming immediately and having them wait three months creates uncertainty and. creates uncertainty and doesn't help with supply. I also wanted to highlight that the, the definition of the, the, the very, very narrow definition that the city is using to define major, major transit is incredibly, incredibly limiting. So that we are effectively not going to have many locations that are by right allowed for six units. And I would love us to propose that we include anything that's like fixed guideway trolley buses. That would almost double the area that could be could be allowed for, for six units. And then I also wanted to highlight one other aspect, which is that the bonus from four to six units that allows for affordability, or if those two units are affordable. Those part of getting that bonus is requiring that that they're administered by a experienced nonprofit, sort of certified by the Office of Housing. So there's a lot of hoops to like jump through. If someone really, like someone like me, you know, I'm developing a project in Spokane that has two affordable units out of six. But if I had to do that as it is my first one, if I was doing, had to do that, I had to be a nonprofit. I had to show experience. I have to show that I'm going to be around for 50 years when I could, when these are just going to be, you know, they're already sort of restricted by the, the code. I wouldn't have done them. And so I want to make sure that we're opening the door for the few small developers that are going to be taking advantage of that bonus by lowering the bar for, for certifying affordable units. That's it.
Thank you for that, Matt. Michaela?
Hmm. Yes, thank you for the additional inspiration, Matt. I, on the transit piece, don't know what the impact or the would be of the, like the specific suggestion you have for the fixed trolley line. Electric bus option. But maybe language around like more frequent transit service or something like that, that, that it enforces the, the, the desire to see opportunities expanded to more types of transit service. So that we can maximize creating housing options in more parts of the city. On the other requirement for it being difficult and cumbersome and prohibitive for folks to enter the affordable affordable housing provision market. I'll, I'll offer a few observations. One is that these housing types in these more neighborhood residential zones. This is just sort of me thinking about, you know, the typology. And, and who, who is the most likely to develop affordable units in neighborhood residential? And it's affordable homeownership. And affordable homeownership really does need a long-term compliance and monitoring. Because when those units turn over, you need somebody who is getting notified that the units are on the market to help enforce and reinforce the resale restrictions. And without that, you end up getting units that leave an exit despite the covenant requirements and the deed, the affordability stock. So I hear you, but I would want to have a really thoughtful. I think the sentiment of like, how do we increase the amount of folks who are likely to use this program? Cause I do remember OPCD coming and talking to us and they said, we really do think this bonus provision is just going to be used by affordable housing providers. And so I think they were like designing with it and that in mind. On the rental side, we, we have a model that we can tap into and follow, right? Like MHA has performance units on site. And there, there, as we saw in the MHA evaluation report, the five-year study that recently came out. It's cumbersome and it's burdensome for, for folks to perform on site. And so most are opting not to do it. Ninety-five percent, I think, or something like that of the units were fee in lieu. So while we could adjust the requirements, the certification requirements, Matt, I'm not sure we're able to see a lot of uptake. And I think there's a lot of risk involved on the homeownership side. But I, I kind of like where your head is, right? Like, why, why shouldn't we make it easy? For, for more folks to say, you know, I want to play my part in providing some affordable housing. But I'm not a nonprofit with a track record and et cetera, et cetera. So I hear you, but I have some reservations.
I would, I would agree. I would, what I would love to have is have the legislation be proactive about maybe Office of Housing. Like designing like a, a way to build up new, like, you know, to create that. I don't know that they, like, I don't know what the, the approval process. Like, how do you get into, how do you become an experienced affordable housing nonprofit? I would like, I would love for this legislation to like, say, you know, Office of Housing, design a program that like, you know, trains new affordable housing providers. Something like that for the homeownership side. I agree.
All the equitable development initiative, and there might be actually be some nexus there, some opportunity there to say like, there's an opportunity here for the EDI to step in and help seed and fund emerging homeownership developers.
Yeah.
Yep. That's great. Great discussion. Vanessa, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thinking about this. John, could you go to the slide that has the timeline? I'm just thinking about ever the pragmatist here. The public hearing is on the 19th. Council will vote two days after that on the interim legislation. And then the full council will vote the following Tuesday on the interim legislation. So I am just being thoughtful about how much of a difference comments made at the public hearing on the 19th are going to have on that legislation, given that really the legislation council, the, the current schedule is for the select committee to vote on the interim legislation two days after the public hearing. And then to vote and to, to make it law by the full council the following Tuesday. So one thought I had as we are crafting the public comment for the 19th on the interim legislation is to frame that public comment in light of what you all would like to see in the permanent legislation. Because I don't really unless this, this schedule significantly changes, or they decide to change the council rules. Any additional amendments to this bill would then require another, my understanding would require another public hearing. And a 30-day notice or a 21-day notice, they would not be able to keep the current calendar schedule that you see in front of you if they were to entertain additional amendments. So just something for you all to consider where you want to put the oomph of your, the, the actionable, what, what public comment that you all would provide is actionable and where that action sits? Does it sit in the interim legislation or really does it sit in the permanent legislation? That my understanding is going to be transmitted by the executive towards the end of this month.
Any thoughts or reactions to that?
We love you being a pragmatist, Vanessa.
Very boring.
Someone has to do it.
Someone has to do it.
I really like the suggestion. I think it's not just pragmatic, but strategic and make, makes a lot of sense. The goal here is to sort of minimize. And, and make sure that what passes is minimal and thoughtful. And then really put our efforts into the permanent legislation. As, as we would encourage council to do as well. That's really where their energy should be.
Yeah. Okay. Unless there's any other comments. Last call on this topic. And by this topic, I mean, all of the things related to the interim legislation on HB 1110. Okay. With that, I'm going to move us to our working session on the future Planning Commission independent work. As you all may recall, we have a long history of producing our own independent research and recommendations to the city and over a wide variety of topics, everything from industrial lands policy to family-sized housing, to neighborhoods for all, to recovery from COVID and and now that the comp plan work is winding down in terms of our involvement, we have the opportunity to to come up with what our next report or independent work will be. So with that, I will pass to, well, we will hear out reports from the different small groups. I think there were four. Is that right, Vanessa? Or five?
Correct. Yep, there were four.
Okay, four groups who met over the past two weeks. I'm not sure if every group had a chance to, to meet. But for those who were able to, to be able to discuss, share out kind of what you discussed and came up with of, of a proposed scope for future work. And we have about an hour and 20 minutes or so for this. We may not need the whole time. But we will, we will take this opportunity and use it. So is there anyone who is prepared to go first and kind of share back what you talked about?
Jamie, I, I did prepare, prepare a few slides just to set context. For people who, who are listening in, you've covered most of it, but if I could just whip through those very quickly and you've teed us up wonderfully.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to have stolen your thunder.
No, no, please take my thunder. I don't, I don't need my thunder. I don't need thunder. Can you please go to the next one? So as, as Jamie just noted, we do have a history of independent work of the Planning Commission. This is in the past, this work has been undertaken when we are not in the middle of a major update to the comp plan. And I will note that we've been working on the major update to the comp plan since 2022. When we produced, when you all produced four issue specific briefs to inform the comprehensive plan major update. The adoption of the comprehensive plan. The one Seattle plan has been spread out over a number of months and will continue to be spread out into, I believe, the end of this year, beginning of next year. And so while the work is not done on the comprehensive plan, I think it makes sense to spend some car, to carve some time for you all to be able to take on the independent work that the Planning Commission has done in the past, that has really informed current work and past work as well as future work of the city. Next slide, please. So about two weeks ago, I sent out a draft scope of what this independent work might look like. This was informed by a discussion that we had at our retreat. And so it, these are just the highlights. There seemed to be general consensus on building on and evolving our past work. And there were some individuals and some general consensus around the idea of a neighborhoods for all 2.0. That's a working title, definitely not something to be married to. And the highlights in that were increasing house choice, removing barriers to greater housing choice and affordability. And to build a network of connected, thriving neighborhoods that, that network and connection was really echoed in a lot of the conversations. Both a network of different housing choices, as well as a transportation network and accessibility network that managed to connect the housing choices and the neighborhood centers. There were other issues that came up and there was a desire to weave in those other issues, including accessibility, anti-displacement, climate, cultural spaces, homelessness and youth. Next slide, please. And in that email two weeks ago, I posed the question for the working, small working groups, does the proposed scope feel right? Are there items to add or save for a future piece of work? And then what are you particularly passionate about that you could bring energy to this effort? I also noted in the email to think about in terms of scoping this piece of work, and we don't even know what it's going to look like yet. Do you want something that is broad and touches lightly on a number of different areas? Or do you really want to narrow that scope to a few issues and dive deeper? Right now, we do not have a timeframe for how much time we want to spend on this work. We're really in the very beginnings of of defining a scope that will be continued to be tweaked and refined as we go, but we need to start with something. So next slide, please. And that brings us to where Jamie left us with the small group report out. I do, I understand that the Green Group was not able to meet in advance. So I am asking, as Jamie did, is there someone from the Blue Group, the Red Group, or the Yellow Group who would care to share? Share your small groups conversations for the benefit of the, of the larger commission? And I will add that I didn't ask for small groups to identify somebody to report out. So we're going to just do that on the fly.
Matt and I might be able to share shortly.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to make sure, I gotta find it.
I might be able to drop it to you. Is there another group who is ready to go?
We, we could talk for a second.
Great.
The Red Group and just kind of what our initial thoughts we met briefly, just to feel, feel out where we're at with this. We're still thinking through it. So we're, we're just kind of setting, I guess, the stage for discussion, but we, it does feel like there's a lot of broad material. And our takeaways were to, we really felt the need to try to prioritize, especially we get into weaving in the other issues, accessibility, displacement, climate, cultural spaces, homelessness, youth. There's so much. And of course, there's so many issues for Seattle to address at the same time, but we want to make sure that we're not spreading ourselves too thin. That was kind of our first takeaway from it. And then also, I guess, wanting to get a feel for where folks are at in terms of what the neighborhoods for all report did and did, does the comprehensive plan, is it? Do we feel like it did enough and it's time to shift towards a different focus? Or do we need to further it? And that's just kind of a question I'm throwing out to to other groups as well. There were a couple of specific areas Nicholas mentioned being interested in zoning reform as one area that he was particularly interested in. In the light of trying to simplify zoning code. And then Diana mentioned wanting to understand kind of a strategy for sidewalk infill. And these are getting to very specifics, but just things that came up during the course of our conversation. And by, and then my specific interest is of a broken record, but again, on this idea of neighborhood centers, very curious as to what sort of policies can go in place to curate and maintain, enhance the existing commercial cores that these that the neighborhood centers are proposing to enhance. You know, we're bringing in a bunch of housing around these existing commercial businesses. And I'm just, I haven't seen enough discussion or policy. And um, I'm just, I, I haven't seen enough discussion or policy or uh, put in place from the city uh, to try to uh, I guess combat any, any sort of potential displacement. And we've talked about this a little bit in terms of NPC ideas. Uh, and I just haven't seen that, but um, it brings to, to mind ideas of uh, talking with uh, organizations like Africa Town and the Central District and the work that they did uh, with bringing in so many existing uh, and culturally relevant businesses to the twenty-third and union developments that went in. Um, and just navigating that sort of process. Again, kind of going down a rabbit hole in terms of my own personal interest and specifics, but that was where our conversation went, was uh, really trying to, uh, we felt the need to prioritize and figure out what kind of what our priorities are and not to spread ourselves too thin. Uh, did anybody else, Nicholas or Diana, and Rose was not able to meet with us, so curious if she, she has any, any thoughts?
If Rose, um, I would defer to Rose if she has any thoughts right now, but otherwise I'll just um, mention maybe some key highlights of what the broad terms of where it should go um, might be, but Rose, I first give you the opportunity.
Rose is out sick today, so she is not joining us.
Alright, sorry about that. Um, so um, I think um, as, as Dylan mentioned, I think the key is, and I think we all acknowledge that, and I think that was the whole point of meeting in subgroups, is that it is too broad. And uh, perhaps this is just where I tend to go to, but I would like us to uh, focus on, you know, the two point oh aspect of this to, uh, on top three priorities and three barriers that we would want to see removed if we don't think that the comprehensive plan uh, did justice to really allowing us to advance to specific outcomes. I would love to make sure we have some metrics, right, that we say neighborhoods for all, this is where we were. This is where we're at right now. Trends show that we're going here, and even with all the policy that exists, we don't anticipate the trend shifting. So to change that, those outcomes and shift the course, these are the three, and I don't know that we know that silver bullet, I wish we did, right? But these are the three main focus areas that are gonna tilt the trajectory that we're on for housing choice, housing affordability, and you know, truly making neighborhoods accessible for all. And making them accessible for all starts with allowing people of all incomes and backgrounds to be able to live in more neighborhoods in our city. So to me, that's kind of the main, you know, I, I don't know if we can get there, if we have enough time or research capacity to demonstrate evidence-based arguments about those policy decisions. But that's where I see the need to kind of work towards. Otherwise, it's just repeating what a lot of groups are already contributing and the general commentary around, how do we get more housing choice and affordability? And we keep repeating what everyone is saying and ourselves. So it, it would be great, I think, to kind of have something that truly changes things, kind of like what the commission did to change, you know, uh, neighborhood residential to be neighborhood residential and like feel very excited about participating in a document that can do that.
That is a great uh, segue. Um, to maybe Matt, I can do like high level how we got to where we are, and then we can go to our two different, so um, for group blue, uh, it was just Matt and I, the other folks weren't able to make it. Um, but I think high level, what I would say is we were discussing, what are we actually trying to accomplish here? Like, what is the core issue, problem that we are addressing? Um, and being really clear on using that specific issue as the lens to touch on all of the bigger picture stuff. So um, and to Deanna, what you're saying is like, what is the big idea that we're moving forward? It, what's the new innovative thing? I think the role of the commission has always been to kind of move the needle and push the needle on um, on like out there ideas, like imagine what we could do as a city if we did this, right? And oftentimes, that's difficult for city staff or um, electeds to do that because of political reasons, right? Like as folks who are representing a broad um, swath of different professions and backgrounds and areas across the city, we have the ability to be like this, this great think tank in a sense. Um, and so with that in mind, we had, we ended up coming up and talking through the ideas and then coming up with like four, four topics, and then we narrowed it down to two. Um, and uh, yeah, how do we want to split this, Matt?
Um, you take one, I'll take one? I think, uh, how about I'll do the, I'll do the first one?
Okay, go ahead.
Which one's the first one? Now, uh, I think now, uh, the, one thing that um, that seems to be kind of a, a uh, a major transformation of Seattle is the, is the with the, with the growth of the neighborhood centers and just the decentralization of the city as a whole. Like, what does, what's the impact? What, like, almost along the same lines as what Dylan was talking about with regards to like what are neighborhood centers look like, feel like, what's their urban design of those? What does the city look like if it really, if we really created uh, like a connected network of neighborhood centers? From a transit perspective, from like all the different, all the different modes, what, what would we, what would the city look like? If we were really thinking about, you know, it's uh, you know, Delridge to Beacon, Beacon Hill. You know, those like, you know, not thinking about everything as being to and from downtown, but between neighborhoods. How would that change the texture of the city? And that's kind of where our, our planning is, but there isn't a like a, a I think there's a, there is kind of a lack of, of vision and follow-through and like path for what, what needs to be implemented to, to create that sort of multi-centered uh, city. Um, we have geologic, or you know, geographic challenges and all sorts of different things that we'd have to, have to sum out, but I don't think anyone is like really grabbing that problem by the horns. Um, is that a pretty good sum of?
Yeah.
A point one?
That report name was a, a decentralized city. And we're building off of that idea of like the nodes and the um, like the, you know, those commercial hubs that were already kind of being piloted in the comp plan, but what if you like took that a step further? What would it look like? What would that look like to have, to decentral, this is the spicy part, to decentralize downtown? Um, so that, that was one of our ideas. Um, and then the other, the other one was um, we, we named this report Housing for All, Having a Full Spectrum of Housing in Seattle. Um, so this is kind of like a, a play off of um, uh, housing choice, but really using this as um, an example of like what are all of the different barriers to creating housing choice in the first place, right? And so um, a healthiest city is where everyone has a place to call home, and we're cre- increasingly taking segments out of the full spectrum of housing, right? So when we think about it, not just as like what housing is available, but what are the actual choices that are available to people? Um, and if we frame that as like, uh, you know, here's an example of what are the choices that are available for someone who makes below median income. Let's say they make, you know, sixty thousand dollars a year. What is realistically available to them in this city, in both the private market and in nonprofit housing, affordable housing? What is available to them? Um, and what choices are they making? So there's choices of, it's like the city's role in all this, right, is that they have the responsibility and power to shape the choices that end up being available, right? The systemic conditions that then create the choices that are available for people who are then navigating personal choice around housing decisions, right? Um, and so uh, so we were thinking like this could be, here are the systemic factors that are contributing to the availability of in- individual choice options. So you could do a profile on someone who is median income, you could do profiles on different professions and folks who work in different professions. You could do um, a, build off our family-sized housing report and have a families with small children, what are the options that are available for them in this city? Um, and what are the barriers to them finding something here or forcing them to move further out of the city? Um, and then we also had like for folks who have disabilities, what kind of housing is available? We have great expertise on the commission now, so I'm super excited about that. Um, uh, so that was, that was kind of our thinking is like building off housing choice, but connection, connecting that to profiles, people, and what are the systemic conditions? And the climate change angle here too, is we've talked about like the more people have to move out of the city and further away from their jobs and trans, like commuting and transiting farther, right? Like this could be um, this could be that connection of how do we actually make it realistic for people to live in this city? So both of them have climate change connections, both of them have anti-displacement connections, um, but that's kind of where we landed.
I love it. I, I really love me, I, I like, of course, the ID, the idea Matt presented. Um, it's mu- far more complex, and it has to do with the comment I just put in the chat, which is, I think the comp plan itself tells that story and has a policy foundation for that, but it doesn't articulate strategies, which is first, second, and third, basic network of components that need to be in place for this to be basically fertilized for it to then continue. Right? So there's not cross-plan, strategy, strategic area plans that allow for that, which is why I think it's far more complicated topic to broach than what you just described, which really touch on, you know, ex- exemplifying by income level, by who you are, how is it that you could access housing choice and everything you just outlined. I mean, that's the outline, let's do it. I love it.
Dylan, I see you in the chat.
Um, yeah, I guess um, I, I really, I liked the idea of kind of the network of neighborhoods uh, pushing that. I guess what appeals to me is that we've, and as we should continue to do, but we've spent so much time on housing and housing and housing, which we absolutely have got to spend time on it, but I, I the idea of neighborhood centers gets me excited because it not only doesn't address housing, but it addresses uh, it expands to community, you know, it's addressing community, which includes housing and all the services that are needed to be able to support that housing and actually get people out of their cars. Um, and so uh, I really, I do like this idea of taking and, and pushing the city to uh, really understand what does it mean to create this new place type? And then mean to get beyond just our downtown focused uh, sort of, which is, you know, uh, pandemic has pushed us away from it, um, from this idea of having everything funnel into downtown. And we're starting to see folks come back, but uh, it's all, there's, I think there's always gonna be a, a, a shift that occurred. And, and I think that's not going away. And uh, personally, I've always been frustrated myself by our transit network and not being able to get from, you know, easily from neighborhood to neighborhood, but always having to go downtown and back out again. And so there's, there's something to this idea of what does it really mean to create this new place type that is connected and that gets beyond just a, you know, a what gets to a polycentric city, or beyond just, you know, our, our regional centers, but also the small neighborhoods in between and really starts to cater to those and curate those uh, and design our city around them. Not just as bedroom communities to support jobs downtown, but as their own independent communities that are connected uh, with each other. And so um, yeah, I feel like, uh, I really interested in that, that idea.
Well, I know we still have at least one more group to hear from. Um, so maybe we can hold off on other comments and questions to hear from them, and then we can open it up to everybody.
CEO and Caleb, who wants to go?
I was just gonna read your email, so.
Okay.
You can feel free to add lead too, yeah.
I, I think that what we were talking about is in like strong community with Jamie and Matt, the two items that you raised, we, and I, I'd say to the, who's the group that went first, the Red Group as well, we sort of led with this interest in reforming zoning to open up more places for like more types of housing needs in the city. Um, and thinking about how access to housing, not only for homeowners, but for renters, in- increases people's access to things like amenities and spaces to walk and play and live our lives and not just uh, transit stops. Um, and so thinking about like neighborhoods of choice, renter access to the incredible amenities that exist, and then safety, walkability, and community connection. Um, and we have bullet points under each of those, but that's sort of the high level. Where that Michael and Caleb, do you want to add anything?
Waiting to see Caleb, go ahead. He'll said he's good. Uh, I think at the top we talked about, yeah, this is, these concepts are too many. We really do need to narrow our focus. Um, and got kind of jazzed about zoning reform, but didn't totally know what does that mean? Um, and that the commission has been most impactful with its, you know, member-driven work. Um, when it's thought through a long game on something and really thought about the the lever it's trying to pull or the dialogue it's trying to shift. Um, and so uh, I think we were, we were trying to think through like, what's the best new kind of emerging practice that we should sort of be trying to advance, or how can we be strategic with that? And that's something I think I would encourage us all as commissioners to, to do with this work, is to not just sort of prepare broad thought pieces, maybe reiterating things that have been part of the dialogue for a really long time. Um, but thinking about where do we want this city, where do we want uh, elected officials and community members and the media to take this city next? Um, and what role, what idea do we want to seed with all of this? Um, and so uh, narrow, and then it became difficult for us to narrow because we care about so many things. And there are so many things that that um, contribute to like making great communities. Um, and so um, the exercise was really hard. Um, and so uh, today's conversation has been really interesting for me to, I feel very inspired by this workshop. I really wish we were like in a room together with whiteboards and like paper, and we could be um, pausing to sort of play off of each other's ideas, because I, I definitely um, I got a lot of inspiration out of the ideas that came up today. Um, let me go back to the email, Zio. Yep, I think you got it.
I mean, that could maybe be a future commission meeting, we could actually all meet in person in the boards and commission room. There are some big uh, walls that we can put poster paper on, so. Um, I, I was talking to Matt and my group, and I was uh, was saying, I'm like, I'm having a lot of FOMO of uh, rolling off the commission, because all of this work seems super exciting. Um, Deanna, I see you in the queue.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's actually thanks um, Blue Group, uh, because I think maybe the, the title I loved, um, and, and, and the, the main focus of the Housing for All and the spectrum of uh, housing choice in Seattle, framing that with kind of a secondary argument that bridges this whole connecting the neighborhoods. I mean, they're both related, but I would almost put it as, we need to access the city, right? It's, it's about accessing It's, it's about accessing the city first and foremost through housing choice. And, you know, not second, but rather in that spirit of making sure everyone can access all the other assets and, uh, opportunities the city has to offer. We need to connect these neighborhoods. And I do think to Dylan G's point, we do need to hammer down. The pandemic trend is not going to go away. And I think, you know, um, we should need, we, we just need to be thoughtful about how we make the argument about decentralizing from downtown and the impact, you know, the ramifications of that. Cause we understand why the city and, uh, the city, city, both leadership from the business community and, um, you know, electeds have chosen to maintain downtown as a focus. Um, there's a lot of investment that has gone, uh, to, you know, towards centralizing the city and downtown. So being thoughtful about what that transition might look like could be interesting for us to kind of explore. It doesn't mean, don't focus on downtown, right? It's not an either or proposition, I think, is what we're trying to say. So, um, I, 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 you know, I guess I would like to hear from other commissioners if kind of access to the city through the lens of housing for all and connecting neighborhoods being our two main topics. And then unpacking what the three barriers for each or priorities for each should be. And that, if, if we could distill it to those, that kind of architecture of the paper, I think it would be a successful document to, to shift the conversation.
Any other thoughts, comments, reactions? I love the idea of doing this in-person workshop before, before I roll off the commission. Yeah, go ahead, Cecilia. And then Zeo.
Um, I, yeah, love all, all these ideas. I'm just thinking about housing choice, I think is really exciting because I'm having a hard time like just thinking about concrete things that can come out of, um, trying to understand how we de- decentralize our city. Um, and I've been interviewing, I've been trying to collect for DRW, uh, trying to do a housing story map. And, um, just every person I have interviewed so far, which is like not many, it's maybe like, uh, half dozen, but it, every person, transportation, like all these things come up just inherently in, in how they choose housing. And so I feel like by doing, highlighting different profiles of people, these other, it, it's not just going to be strictly on housing, just because, um, housing choice is so dependent on, you know, if there's childcare and how far is the childcare from the school to the, to my work? Or what's the transportation like if I'm a one-car household or if I'm a non-driver? And so I, I feel like these profiles are just make it so much easier, just make it so much easier to understand the different layers of zoning. I, I know that, um, especially with disability, because, um, that people don't really understand when you say there's not of, of, um, a lot of available accessible housing until you like break down like exactly why there's not. And, um, there's like real reasons why there's no choice. And, and also, um, yeah, I just, I just keep thinking about Redmond's comprehensive plan, which is just so different from ours. Um, you know, like in so many ways, but the, the way that they've really spent a lot of time focusing on universal design and, um, and not just about accessibility, but like thinking about universal design is like in both like overlay, the overlay, um, area and the Raymore area is like, you know, how, what are the housing choices for all ages, for seniors? You know, how are we making sure that there's things that are in close proximity to walking in parks? And so I feel like, I don't know, I, I think housing choice is just an exciting, more like uh, a way to kind of grapple this challenge. And then I, not that I'm, uh, if we, just because sidewalks have come up and I can talk about sidewalks all day. If we were, and I think that's a very narrow scope, I'm kind of excited about something else. But, um, also, uh, DR, DRW worked really hard to get, um, two things in the levy. One is that the transportation levy, there's a sidewalk cliff. So after four years, there is no more money, um, for sidewalks. And, uh, which we are, we really fought for because there is money, um, in the levy to fund, uh, it, it got diluted. It was supposed to be a sidewalk and bridge, bridge funding task force to come up with like actual concrete ways that we can fund, because, I mean, we can't, there's no way we can have a five billion dollar levy for sidewalks, uh, or bridges. And so the goal was that there was an actual incentive to implement whatever this task force comes up with, because it looks really bad to have no more sidewalk money. Um, so anyways, that's just, eh, if we wanted to drill down to a subject, that's just an opportunity for, um, I think the commission to, to have like a impact on, on something that is hopefully coming up.
Jamie, did we just lose you?
Thank you.
No. This is why I'm on two devices now, just in case, because my internet is spinning in and out. Um, uh, yeah, that was really great, Cecilia. Thank you. Uh, Zeo?
Um, yeah, I, I think I, I'm really excited about, uh, one way that I think I've heard this work framed is like figuring out what we've seen in this comprehensive plan cycle and trying to set up a better conversation for the next one and like laying groundwork for the kind of future that we want to see. And I, we talked in our small group a bit about how like, just like desolate of an understanding of what, like where people choose to live, choosing to center your, your density planning around transportation. Like sets up, like, that's such a, a sad perspective on like how people want to build communities. If it's just about like getting out your door, getting to a bus stop and getting off where you work and then coming back. Um, and so I, I think that setting up a perspective and a position for the city on like creating places that aren't just dense in terms of housing, but also in terms of like amenities and opportunities and places to connect with each other and, and like discovery and all the things that like make urban life really interesting and exciting. And aren't to that, to Dylan's point, like bedroom communities for downtown. Um, I think just like giving, giving people something to be excited about when it comes to thinking about housing potential in the city and not just like a clinical, like, okay, we're going to add density where there's capacity, sort of conversation that it feels like the, the upzoning along transit lines landed in. Yes.
Density of opportunities.
Ooh, I, I just heard a potential, uh, uh, title name. Get that down in the notes.
Got it.
Any other folks?
There's a lot of energy levels. I love that, like, the role of the commission is really like to do a lot of this visioning work and do the research and the background to be like, imagine if we could do this and this is what it could take to do it. So I'm, I'm really excited about the energy that's, that's in this discussion right now.
Michaela, you had your hand up?
I did. Um, I don't really know where it fits into all of this, but I don't want to lose the idea that Deanna had about we need, we need to take our plans and move them into action. Like, that's, we, we, we create a policy framework. We, we're, we're deliberating kind of like the zoning that's going to come along with it. But then what happens over the next 10 years? And metrics can help with that. Um, and we could be shaping some of that conversation around making sure that this comprehensive plan, um, ki- is carried out as best as it can be. Um, and so I don't really know how that ties into what we would be doing over the next, uh, year with this independent work, but I did love that idea from Deanna. Um, and there was something else I was going to say, but I lost my, lost my thought. That was actually not the main point that I was going to make, but I don't remember what I was going to say.
Um, I should have put myself in the chat.
I remember now. Um, I think the ideas that I'm hearing, I think we have a lot of expertise to do some of this work. Um, and a diversity of expertise, I think, could, could, uh, um, bring, we, some of us could bring data to bear. Um, some of us could bring sort of policy design to bear. Some of us could bring sort of the qualitative and storytelling component of building case statements. Anyway, so I'm, I'm, I, I feel like we've done a good job of identifying what we're interested in, but also what we might be actually capable of executing.
I'm happy to provide any climate, uh, uh, things you need. Call me in. Vanessa, do you, do you feel like you have what you need to continue the conversation on this?
I do. Yeah. I think, um, John and I will put our heads together. Um, I heard some enthusiasm for another working session, potentially in person. And so I'm going to try to, um, get that on everybody's calendar as soon as possible. I'm thinking our next, uh, afternoon full commission meeting is June 12th, which is about four weeks out. So, um, those of you on the call, please put a hold on that on top of the commission meeting hold and maybe pencil next to it in person desired, because, um, I, I do think it's fabulous that we have this tool, MS Teams, as much as it is the bane of my existence. Uh, I think also though, being able to be in a room and to pick up on each other's comments and not to have to rely on, um, being in a queue and raising your hand and all that stuff. I think, um, I'm excited by this conversation, uh, so stay tuned. Um, yeah, and there will be snacks. And I think Deanna is the leisure hand up. Um, just a quick, um, question, and this came up in our red group, uh, to, to an extent, which is, is, and I know that we are framing this, we don't have a timeline or, you know, kind of like a specific horizon for what we want to inform this, eh, eh, you know, kind of our, our arguments around. But is this something that perhaps is intended to inform, um, the next update? So like, are we talking a five-year? Kind of like goals of what, what can be achieved to modify anything that needs to be modified in five years? And is that kind of where we're framing this? Is this, uh, something to look out for just generally as how the comp plan the next 20 years is going to be implemented? So no real change, but, or are we trying to kind of have, um, impact to whatever can actually be changed or requested to be monitored from now to five years or 10 years? And I think that would be an interesting thing to discuss.
I think that is a great thing to discuss at our in-person snack potluck workshop. Because I think in the past, the commission has done a mixture of those things, right? We've done like, here's like, there, here's some like pie in the sky, really great vision that doesn't have any political, uh, like willpower to do right now, but we might in the future. And then we've also had things that are a little bit more term limited of like, here's what you could do in considering the comp plan update coming in X number of years, right? So I think, I think that's something that's worth us discussing is like, do we want to have like bigger picture vision? Do we want to be strategic? Do we want to do a mixture of like short-term and long-term? Um, so I think, I think we can talk through that. Go ahead, Michaela.
And, and Jamie, there's, there is a, um, pragmatically some mid, like progress, implementation, progress reporting requirements that Seattle will have to comply with now, where in five years, they're going to have to report to the state on greenhouse gas emission reductions. And some housing stuff. Um, and they're also going to be evaluated by the committee that I staff in my day job in terms of their, um, uh, any shortfalls in their, their efforts to plan for and accommodate housing needs. And so thinking about that five-year check-in, a lot of eyes are going to be on Seattle. And so Jamie, maybe, um, I wanted to say it now so I could see your thinking about how this work could be, uh, what role we might want to play as a commission in the greenhouse gas emissions piece. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's, that's a good point, because, um, the, what we could put forward, if that report comes back and says, you've missed all your targets on these things and we've put forward a vision that says, here's you, how, how you could address some of these things. It could be really impactful on that timeline, so. Any, any other closing thoughts? John is suggesting that every group identify a mascot for next. I feel like, I feel like we. Um, I feel like, I feel like we, uh, have used our, our, our breakout groups for this. I love that, like, we, we mix each other up all the time. So I'm imagining we're not going to always be in the same little groups anyway. It helps to, helps to break things up and collaborate with new people. Um, all right, uh, unless we have anything else, any other final comments? They might adjourn us.
Thanks all. This is a great, like, excited and energetic note to end on and, and not end on, to keep going.
And Vanessa, I saw your note about notes. I will send that as soon as I can get my internet restored.
Okay. Thanks, Jamie.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks all. Make sure I got to do. Olivia usually does, which is end the recording and end the meeting.
I can end the meeting.
Thank you. Stop.